Good evening and welcome to the Town of Scarborough Planning Board Meeting for January 5th, 2015. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, could you please take the roll?
Mr. DuPont?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mazur?
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Thank you. A couple of quick notes. First, I'd like to welcome Mike Wood back to the board.
Yes.
As some know, he has served this board in the past and served it very well, and it's great to have him on board again. Also, I'll note that both Mr. Wood and Ms. Ogless will be voting members this evening. And as was mentioned just before, we called the meeting to order. We do have one item, item number six, which has been tabled at the request of the applicant, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland, so we'll not be doing that one tonight. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the December 8th, 2014 meeting.
Is there any discussion? Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'm staying. I want to show that to be unanimous with one abstention. Mr. DuPont was not present. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, this being the first meeting of the new year, is the election of Planning Board Officers. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Chase.
Sure. At the end of the last meeting, the current Board Secretary, Mr. Mazur, offered up a slate of officers, and that slate was as follows. Mr. Fellows as Chair, Mr. Mazur as Vice Chair, and Mr. DuPont as Secretary. So I just offer that to the board for your discussion.
I'll make a motion to nominate the slate.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? I want to show that to be unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number five is a consent item. Reapproval of Griffin Road Development LLC subdivision for a 36-unit senior housing project at 5 Griffin Road. Jay?
Yep, just by way of brief background, the application was approved by the board in July of 2014. The need for reapproval is due to the fact that the statutory timeline for recording the Mylar has run out. Basically, our ordinance requires that you record a Mylar within 90 days of the approval date, and that time elapsed. So the application, ostensibly, the program hasn't changed at all. The board's just being asked to reapprove the subdivision plan. I will just note that there were a couple of conditions that were originally approved in July that have been satisfied. One is to revise the plans per the board's discussion and staff comments that had been accomplished after the July meeting, as has the letter of authorization from the Dunston Plaza property owner. As you'll note, that was a big part of the board's discussion, was making improvements at the Route 1 and Griffin Road intersection area through that property. With that, staff has drafted a brief motion for the board to consider if you're so inclined.
Thanks, Jay. Does the applicant have anything to add at this point? Seems pretty straightforward.
I'm Rocky Risbera. There was an opportunity to add. Not really. It was 91 days by the time we met all the conditions, and the ordinance says 90. That's why we're back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? All right, again, pretty straightforward, so I'll make a motion. I move to reapprove the subdivision plan titled Griffin Road Senior Housing Revised December 17th, 2014. With the acknowledgement that the findings and applicable conditions from the planning board's July 14th, 2014, notice of decision remain effective. The site plan elements shall be developed in accordance with the detailed plans set dated September 8th, 2014, which was revised based on the planning board's conditional approval of July 14th, 2014.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
We will be signing that plan at the end of this meeting.
All right. Item number six, as we mentioned, was tabled. Item number seven, Morrison Developmental and Educational Center requests an amended site plan amendment review for 6D Chamberlain Road. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. As just noted, let's see, this is for an expansion at the existing school at the intersection of Chamberlain and Highland Avenue. The site was originally approved by the board in 2007. It's within the R2 zoning district and is permitted use therein. As mentioned, the applicant, or as noted in the applicant's submission, they're requesting to add to the building about 3,900 square feet plus some site improvements to the parking lot. In advance of the meeting, you should have received comments from planning staff, Wittern and Curran, the town's peer review engineer, and Traffic Solutions, Traffic's peer review engineer. Ostensibly, questions that were flagged in sort of the, in those really revolve around the need for the additional parking spaces, just trying to understand the programmatic uses that triggered those needs, and assuring that stormwater provisions are adequately being provided for and treatment considered of the porous pavement areas that are on-site. There is one area that's porous, maybe, that I'm sure the applicant will sort of highlight for us. With that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll welcome the applicant.
Thank you. My name is John Mitchell. Mitchell Associates represents Morrison Center. Mark Ryder, the Executive Director of Morrison Center, is here, as well as Ben Walter, the architect from CWS. As Jay mentioned, the Morrison Center was approved in 2007. The site plan was approved in 2007, and it's been in operation since 2009. The educational facility is roughly a 31,000-square-foot building on a seven-acre parcel located at the corner of Highland Avenue and Chamberlain Road. And the center currently is in the process of restructuring their current space due to increased programs. The 2007-approved site plan included, there were three areas where we delineated future additions as part of their future growth plan, which totaled approximately 4,700 square feet of future additional building space. And so the amendments that we are proposing in this amended site plan include, number one, a small addition located in the city here. This is Chamberlain Road and Highland Avenue, the entrance, the parking lot is located here, the entrance to the building is here. So the future addition is going to be located off to the rear of the building, and that totals roughly 3,900 square feet. The service drive at the rear of the building has to be aligned, oh, I'm sorry. There'll be a slight modification or adjustment of the service drive. Currently, it is aligned in this direction, and we're going to relocate it in that fashion. And then the third item would be an additional 23 parking spaces. The five that Jay referred to that abut the porous pavement, which is located here, are going to be in this location here. They'll be parking here and here. The reason for the 23 additional parking spaces is that the Morrison Center has found that during their special events, they, the visitors, there are many more visitors than their current daily needs, and they have found that the overflow parking is just not working. They're working, they're parking on grass areas along the edges of the pavement and forming several ruts. So they felt that wherever we could add additional parking would be appropriate for this amendment. And also, back when we received the approvals in 2007, we received a DEP stormwater permit, and we are in the process of mending that permit. We haven't received it yet, but it's in the pipeline. Just to review, a few of the staff comments. There were three comments that came through from staff. Number one was the parking areas, and I indicated that they wanted to know the reason why we wanted, why we needed to add the 23 parking spaces, and I just outlined the reason for that. The landscaping, there will be three, I'm sorry, six existing ash trees that are located along this drive here that may be transplanted. Five will be placed here, and there'll be one placed over there. And then the last comment had to do with architecture, and I'm going to let Ben address that as soon as I'm finished. Wood and Curran, we've addressed all of their comments. I'll just go down quickly. They wanted to know what the status of the DEP permit is. We've had a pre-application meeting with the EP, and we are intending to submit the actual amended application tomorrow. They asked for an inspection of stormwater system, and Lesterio Beach, who is the stormwater engineer on this project, has been out and prepared an inspection report, which will be submitted, actually has been submitted, but I don't believe you have a copy of it. Third comment from Wood and Curran has to do with the six-inch storm drain. They asked us to locate the outlet to the six-inch storm drain. We have attempted to do that. I think that it has been buried. It's only a six-inch storm drain that outlets from the footing drain, so it has a very small amount of flow in it. But my response to that was, is that we will, we will locate it during construction and make any necessary measures for stabilization. They asked us to add a little bit more silt fence in between the addition in the porous pavement, which we have done. And the final comment had to do with the parking space construction, and the, this refers to the five spaces that are located here, and those five spaces, because they're adjacent to the porous pavement, they are going to be treated the same way the porous pavement is, which they don't, it does not receive any sand or salt in that area. So that's how those five spaces will be maintained. So at this point, I'm going to ask Ben to come up and talk a little about the architecture.
My name is Ben Walter. I'm with CWS Architects in Portland. We were the architects for the original building, and we've worked with Morrison Center on several other projects throughout the state. What they are doing here, I guess the emphasis behind this project is that there's a, there's a big increased demand for school-age care. And what they have in there right now in the back wing is an adult program, but they're going to move off-site into another facility and reuse that space for a school-age program with an addition, so that the school-age program will have a lower school and an upper school for two different populations, each with three classrooms. In order to, in order to fit it in there, we needed additional square footage. I think John mentioned that we had originally planned for three additions with his original approval, which did, was part of the stormwater approval originally. This addition is smaller than those three combined, so we're still within that impervious area that was considered as part of the original approval. It's going to be a very simple addition from our standpoint. We're trying to keep it simple because, A, we need to keep this project, this facility operating during construction. And what we did originally when we constructed the building is we had, I'm going to pass these out. This is an image of the existing building. Can I keep one? I think I have enough for everybody. What we did in terms of the form of the building and the color and the textures of the building is we had a number of different geometric shapes that were part of the building. We had a cylinder for the main entrance rotunda. We had a, like a barrel vault for the covered entrance. We had several pitched roof areas, and we had several flat roof areas. As you can see off to the far right, next to the greenhouse, this is a flat roof area, next to a pitched roof area. What we're proposing to do for the addition is to basically replicate the same colors, same materials, same window patterns that we used on the original building. In fact, we're going to be relocating some of the windows that are currently installed on this wall into this new wall across here, and we're going to do it as a flat roof building up adjacent to the existing pitched roof portion of this wing over here. So it will all be in character with what's already there. It's just a, an extension of the existing facade, and it will look very similar to what we have going on here right now. You know, architecturally, I think that's all there is to it. It's pretty simple, pretty straightforward. I think we're trying to, we recognize that this building can be seen from all directions, and it's, we're going to give it just as much of a front door facade as anywhere else. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I think that concludes our presentation.
If you have any questions, answer any questions. Right, thank you. Before we move on to board discussion and any questions, this is an item that is available for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak on this, staff, that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. I'm sensing that there's not. All right, with that then, we'll turn it over to the board, and let's start with John.
I'm good with this. I mean, it's such a small-scale project, you've answered all the questions that staff, all the concerns that staff had, so I'm okay with this, 100 percent.
Thank you. Susan?
I don't have any problems with this. I go by this building a lot, and it's very attractive. I'm not too sure what, flat roofs surprise me in this, in this environment. I mean, why would you want a flat roof other than, rather than a pitched roof, just in terms of maintenance? And it's hard to tell from what you're showing here what it's going to look like from that perspective when you have another flat roof. And the main building is pitched, correct? No. See, it's very hard for me to tell exactly where, from what you've given me to look at, just where this is going to blend pitched with a flat. This is pitched. What we're adding is going to be behind here, which is flat. You see my problem? I don't, I don't see it.
I think what I was trying to represent, we haven't done a rendering of the rear of the building. And so what we are trying to represent in this drawing is that we will be doing an addition that'll have a flat roof, and it will basically be similar to this, and it will be similar to this where we have a flat roof, and how it's adjacent to a pitched roof structure. You know, it's, so it will look very similar to that, except for it's on the back side. It's pretty well hidden from both, both the roads. But you know, when you have a large expanse of a building, it's very difficult to do pitched roofs. And the reason is, is because by the time when you have a pitched roof and you're going up, let's just say, six and 12 or something, by the time you come in, you know, let's just say 30 feet, you know, you're already up very tall, and if you continue to go up and up and up, you end up with this giant amount, volume of space up there. So we have to keep your pitches into reasonable areas, reasonable locations.
Is this a new?
This was submitted. This elevation was submitted.
That was what you submitted, originally.
Yeah, and so. This was submitted just last week.
Oh, okay.
So this does include the addition, and the addition is shown right over here, and it's shown right over here on this elevation and a little bit around the corner over here. And so what you're looking at in terms of the, in terms of the location, is you'll be, you'll be seeing a flat roof addition with a pitched roof behind it.
It's going to fall over. Does anybody care?
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
It's just going to hit the floor.
And, and then, so everywhere you're going to see a flat roof, you're going to see other roofs behind it. Here's the greenhouse behind that. Here's the other roof. There's this pitch on this side. Same thing over here. You're going to see a little portion of it sticking out on the, on the front side, but that, that would be very similar to what you would be seeing in this picture right here, where you have a, a flat roof adjacent to a pitched roof.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a comment in that it really was hard to visualize this. Just a note to staff to tell applicants that, you know, I get this, but that's what's there. I didn't get that, that it wasn't in my packet. So, you know, it's one of my major questions is, I'm very visual. I was curious, where are all the adults going?
Hopefully we will get a suitable location in Portland.
Just identify yourself for the reference.
I'm Mark Ryder, the Executive Director.
And you found a place in Portland for it?
Hopefully.
Hopefully?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you won't move until you have a place to go.
Exactly.
Okay. I don't really have any problems with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
I don't have anything to add.
Mike?
Just a couple of quick questions. On the existing parking, you said the five new spaces is going to be the same material as existing? You call it porous concrete?
The, no, the five, five new spaces will be betuminous asphalt.
Oh, it will be? Okay. Is the rest of that parking, the existing parking, a porous type of concrete? Is that what I saw?
Yes. The rest of this area right here is porous concrete, but it would be.
Could you describe that better for me, or give me an idea what that is?
The porous concrete.
Right. I know what concrete is. I know what porous means, but.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's comprised of a larger aggregate, and allows, allows water to penetrate down through, it's the same as betuminous asphalt, or porous asphalt, rather. It's the same, same.
And I'm cur, why, why didn't you keep with the same material for the, the five new spaces?
It would be, it would be cost prohibitive to bring the porous concrete contractor, I think the only one is from New Hampshire, into the state to pour, you know, five spaces. Everything else is betuminous asphalt, all the other parking spaces, so.
So the new is going to be concrete to kind of have a visual match?
The new, no, the five new spaces will be betuminous concrete. Yes.
And you spoke about the need for these spaces because of special events and the overflow?
Correct.
So you're pretty convinced that these additional, was it 23 you said?
Twenty-three.
Pretty convinced that that's going to meet the need?
I am, I am sold to, yep. Yeah. Yeah, I think that, that'll be very comfortable for us. We, our special events are, they're mostly, we open up to the public maybe twice a year. We have our Christmas fair, and then maybe some other function in the spring. We also have a retail operation for our greenhouses, and the spring sale brings a lot of traffic in there. We have, because we serve a lot of children, and to play, to meet their needs, we have what's called IEPs. You've probably heard of those. So sometimes that generates 20, 25 meeting participants, and we have those throughout the week, and that's, that's an event, too. And so it's those kind of, those kind of meetings and activities, we also, we have some training, training functions that we sponsor for the region and for the state. It's just those, it's just to accommodate those activities. And I do think that would be a comfortable amount. Keep them on our lawn.
Now, in the literature, you, you explained how you're changing the use of the facility a little bit, whereby the day-to-day demand of the facility is going to be less as far as it relates to traffic.
Right.
But these, but this overflow need is, is the same, the same before as it is, as it will be after, after the addition?
Parking overflow, yes. Yeah. The traffic is going to change significantly because we have, say, 40 adult participants in the AM session and 40 in the PM, and they're, they're brought to our programs by sometimes RTP, family members. So it's a lot of traffic coming in to drop them off, and they come back at 12 o'clock to pick them up, and then at 12:30, another 40 are dropped off. So you see, those won't be, there won't be that much activity anymore.
Okay. And just one more. Sorry, these plans are a little bit too small, but the lighting, any, any concerns or efforts made on the new addition as it relates to lighting? Because you said that that building could be viewed from all, all elevations, all sides?
Viewed from the, from the public?
Yeah, from other, other property owners.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, this is, this is quite wooded in here, and, I mean, I'm sure during the winter months, you can look through the trees. There are filtered views through the trees to this location here. In terms of lighting, there are, there won't be any new light fixtures. We are going to relocate one fixture that's currently here, over to here.
Well, just assuming that the last seven years have been satisfactory for your neighbors, and there's been no complaints with light pollution, et cetera.
Right.
So just, just pause for a second, just make sure that any new lighting or repositioned lighting, you know, is, is no, no greater a, you know, impact.
Right, right. Yeah.
To the other property line, that's all.
Yeah, they, they're all cut off light lenses, and so there won't be any light protrusion.
To interject a little bit, too, what we're doing is we're taking the existing light fixtures that are wall-mounted light fixtures, and we're removing them and replacing them on the walls, just a little bit farther out. So we have one here, and I think it replaces me over here, one over here.
Okay. So, so I just see that as moving closer to your back property line?
Yep.
And just, you know, will that, you know, impact property?
No, they're all cut off luminaires, so they only have a small radius that they'll be able to light anyway, so they'll just going to, we're just moving them over to light this courtyard area, and there's another door over here, we're going to have it right over there that's going to light that area in front of the garage, which is blocked by, it's kind of blocked by the garage, so.
And I see that the, there's a route for emergency vehicles all the way around. That's not touched at all in this addition?
That's not touched. There's an emergency access drive that goes around the building that won't be disturbed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. John.
Thank you. I think questions have been pretty well addressed. I don't really have any concerns with this. I do remember when this originally came before the board several years ago, and I think some of us may have struggled a little bit to picture how the design would play out, but I, I'd say personally anyway that I think it's been very successful, it's very attractive, and you've done a good job of making it attractive from, from all directions because it is a unique site, so that's important. I'm also glad to hear that, that the operation's been successful, and again, I think you've done a good job of addressing a few questions that we had, and with that, I will put a motion forward. Oh, it's just for approval? Motion for, right, this will be a motion for amended site plan approval. I move to approve the amended site plan application of the Morrison Development Center for the addition of 3,900 square feet to the existing school and associated site improvements with the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide the planning department with a copy of the amended DEP permit. And prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a maintenance inspection report of the site's approved stormwater facilities, including the six-inch roof drain outfall and post-construction condition of the porous pavement areas, shall be performed and provided to the planning department. Any necessary maintenance that may be needed shall be performed prior to the issuance of the CO.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. Item number seven. I'm sorry, we're on to item number eight. Friends of Scarborough Hockey request sketch plan review for the development of an ice arena on town-owned property along Clinton Drive. Would you like to introduce this, Jay?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so, as the applicant's material states, project is sort of a result of a cooperative effort between the Friends of Scarborough Hockey and the Town of Scarborough. Friends of Scarborough Hockey is an independent functioning, um, outfit, I'm not sure if it's an LLC or incorporated, so for now, group of-
Non-for-profit, private ownership.
Non-for-profit. Um, has been, as I just mentioned, working with the town council on trying to identify a location on the municipal campus where this, uh, activity might be located. I preface, I sort of introduce it in that way to, um, bring the board up to speed as to, as part of this review, this is a formal site plan review process by the board. Unlike the elementary school that we reviewed within the last year and a half or two years ago, where it was an advisory opinion, this will be a formal site plan review. So we will go through all the T-crossing and I-dotting, um, so I just wanted to be sure that folks are aware, though it is on the municipal campus, this is a full review, site plan review. Again, as board members will note, sketch plan is really an opportunity for the applicant to provide the board with an overview, as detailed or not, of, of a proposal, um, and for the board to provide, uh, guidance to the applicant in terms of what items you think they should highlight, or areas of concern that you're really gonna want to focus in on the analysis. This is beginning, sketch plan's an informal submission, it's really the beginning of a process. There will be further submissions should they choose to move forward as a formal application, which, um, will then kick off the formal public comment process and that sort of thing. Staff in reviewing the materials that were provided, highlighted a few issues that we thought we might wanna bring to both the board and applicant's attention in terms of, uh, stormwater issues that are sort of known in the area and unknown. Um, certainly that's an issue that will, will need to be addressed going forward. Really understanding sort of the shared parking analysis that has been occurring. And so I guess those are sort of the, the two most prevalent, and then just identify that, um, for the applicant that, you know, as they move forward, consultations with the fire department with regards, regards to fire lanes, emergency access will be needed. Um, and then just flag that this is in the TBC two, that town's commercial design standards do apply or will apply as this moves forward. Um, so with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay. Uh, it's a point well taken about the nature of the application. It's somewhat a, a unique situation in that it is, would be on municipal land, but this is not a municipal project. And so as Jay pointed out, unlike some other quote-unquote "public" projects that have come before us, we're gonna be doing more than just providing an advisory committee, uh, advisory opinion. Uh, I also wanted to note for anyone who may be following this among the public, that there will be opportunity going forward for public comment on this as things, assuming things do move forward. Um, uh, that's not part of the agenda tonight, but as this advances beyond, uh, sketch and into more detail, we'll have that opportunity. Uh, so with that, I will turn it over to the applicant. Mr. Allen?
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Lee Allen, with Northeast Civil Solutions, a civil engineering firm. I'm also here with another hat, I'm also on the Board of Directors for Friends of Scarborough Hockey. Um, this is something, both my kids play hockey, and this is something very near and dear to my heart, is getting up at three forty-five in the morning to get to a hockey practice for our school hasn't been that enjoyable for us. I'm also joined tonight by Chuck Bradish, also one of the Board of Direct, uh, members of the Board of Directors for Friends of Scarborough Hockey. Um, wanted to just kinda take you through the process that has led us up to this point. Um, probably a year and a half ago, there was an idea generated by a number of us to start, um, looking for a site in Scarborough to build a nice arena. Um, kinda has grown from that point, we've gone before the town council, we worked, um, with the town manager to come with, up with a memo of understanding, which kind of, um, described the roles of Friends of Scarborough Hockey versus the roles that the town would take in this kind of, uh, a private-public partnership, as you will, to construct an ice arena with private funds, um, not impacting tax base, but being able to put that on public land where it seemed to make the most sense. So, we went through that process, the memo of understanding was approved by the town council. Uh, the next thing was to kind of identify a site within the municipal campus. We looked at a number of sites, one of them was next to the high school, one was where the current flooded pond area they use for hockey during the wintertime, or skating in the wintertime. Um, another one was right where the tennis courts are, and the other one is, is where the basketball courts are. So there was a committee comprised of, um, the school, school board members, library, community services, and town council members, were all involved in a committee to select a site. Um, the athletic director was also involved. So we, we went through this process where we rated each of the sites based on our own reasons for why we thought they were better than the other, and the site adjacent to the library, um, in the vicinity of the basketball courts where we're currently showing it, was the one that ended up being the, the selected site. Um, it was better than the others for quite a number of reasons, and won't bore you the details, but there is a document out there floating around if, if you'd like, that, that goes through all the pros and cons of each site. So we, we chose this mainly for, there's a new parking area that's constructed in accordance with the Wentworth School. The predominant parking needs for the ice arena are late weekday nights and weekends, primarily when Wentworth isn't being used. So one of the thoughts that was talked about back and forth with the town manager was, hey, it makes sense to share this parking area. Um, peak demand for the ice arena, based on the number of seats, we're talking about six hundred plus or minus seats, is about a hundred and eighty parking spaces. Um, there's gonna be some spaces right adjacent to the building, probably twenty or so, um, plus a drop-off area. Um, that's not shown there now, but we think that's probably where that number will get to. Um, that leaves us, there's two hundred and forty-eight parking spaces in that Wentworth parking lot, so that, that leaves, you know, eighty-eight spaces that are, if we were at a full event, still unused in that parking lot, which would not coincide with any events happening at, at Wentworth School. As you're aware, most of the concerts and events with Wentworth School are typically held at the high school auditorium, um, so anybody going to an event at night would be up at the high school and not necessarily down at Wentworth. Uh, stormwater, obviously, uh, the parking lot's already been dealt with in stormwater. There would be a significant amount of runoff based on the, the size of the new building. The, the ice arena building itself is approximately forty thousand square feet. I'd envision probably some subgrade detention to store any increase generated by that building and, uh, surrounding fire lanes, drop-off, um, and parking. Uh, one of the unique things about this is that the front of this building faces the Wentworth parking lot where people would park, so the backside would be actually the front, fronting on Gorm Road. There was a fair amount of discussion on this, there's some long-range plans being talked about, putting a community center in. Uh, there would be room to put a, a sizable building between the ice arena and Gorm Road, um, that was considered. Um, in, in the short term, I, I think we'd be doing a hefty amount of landscaping to screen the back of this, so it would not be very noticeable, um, or as least noticeable as possible. You also notice that the site is in a large wetland area.
Yeah.
That wetland area, according to the town, is a, it was examined when they did the Wentworth, was a, a very low-value wetland, um, as low as it could get. A lot of it has been man-made and created over the time. That being said, we still need to go through the permitting process to ensure that the, any fill that we do is offset by conservation land, and in this case, I believe that's the, the method that we're going to take to offset the wetland fill, which is roughly eight square feet of conservation land per one square foot of wetland fill. There's also a stormwater permit that's held by the town on the municipal wide campus. We'd also be amending that to deal with any increases, um, as we discuss, as I discussed earlier, with the new building. With that, I believe, in a nutshell, I think that covers a lot of the questions. I'll be certainly happy to answer any questions that, that you might have.
Thank you. Start this time with, uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Lee, how you doing?
Good.
Um, I too am a hockey fan. Not only do I like to watch it, but I still play it, I have for the last forty-some-odd years, so. This is exciting for me as well. Nevertheless, I'll try to stay within my role as a planning board member. Um, there are, there are more than a few things that I'm sure the town, that belong in the town council's purview, so, um, again, strictly from a land use perspective. I got a couple of questions, or several actually. With the parking, first of all, um, in the documentation, I think you spoke that, uh, we would, uh, we would be offered minutes from some of the meetings that you've had with the school board members and others. Um, I'd be interested in seeing those, if that's okay, because I like to kinda wrap my arms around how this parking will not conflict with any, uh, potential Wentworth activity.
Sure, as, as part of our formal submission, we're, we're working Bill Bray, he's gonna be our traffic engineer, and we would do a parking analysis, a parking study, to ensure that peak times of the arena do not coincide with peak times, or any times at the Wentworth School, so that we know we have enough parking.
Now, this might be unfair of me to ask you this, and maybe I should be asking this of a school board member or a school official from Wentworth, but I play hockey currently at seven in the morning on Tuesdays and Thursdays now. Now, this facility, you, would you foresee this facility being used for like, uh, men's league and things of that nature? I would think that you'd be interested in renting out whenever possible?
Absolutely, but those times typically, I mean, you're not talking a hundred cars, you're maybe talking forty cars.
Right.
So the forty cars, there's plenty of excess capacity in that parking lot to handle that.
So that parking lot, that doesn't, that parking lot is not, what, twenty-five, thirty, forty percent full during the school day?
Yeah, it, it's probably fifty percent, I would say. Just on, as the times I've gone by, I've, I've been paying attention, it's, it's never been full.
And, uh, maybe you can have this discussion with Bill Bray, but, uh, when I, when I look at that layout, if I was looking at that, just, if you were just bringing this to the board as, uh, a, um, entity of itself, parking lot in a building, right away I see a conflict with the right, you know, with the right-of-way, the, the road in front of the building, separated by the parking lot. So what I, what I see with that, not Gorm Road or the road that the, uh, library's on, yeah, right there. Is there a name to that? No, no, that's the bus turnout.
That's right.
Yes, is there a name to that road?
I just call it the Connector Road.
So when I, I look at that connector road, and I see potential conflict with folks walking across that road after they've parked to go to and fro the, the arena.
There's, there's gonna be significant work and thought put into pedestrian circulation, and what are we gonna do with that?
Lighting.
Lighting, is, is there gonna be a push-button signal or something? 'Cause I agree, when the game gets out, there is gonna be a significant conflict in and out there.
Okay, uh, thank you. And, um, I think you spoke to it, but I didn't, I didn't hear any answer per se, but is the fire department gonna require some sort of emergency access around the whole building? And if so, does that show on that?
So the answer is, we haven't talked to the fire department yet, but typically they require access to at least three sides of a building. Um, right now, we've, we've clearly got it on this side, this side, we've got it probably here.
Okay.
We need to work and figure out with them, where do they, do they, would they prefer something down this side, would they rather have it this way?
Okay.
There's a couple of options to be explored, we're, we're probably just not at that point yet, but before we come back, we would definitely be meeting with them and talking about it, because obviously if you're putting, you know, six hundred and fifty, seven hundred people to, to watch a high school hockey game into an arena, you need to have-
Right.
-fire department on board to know what's gonna happen if there's something had to-
And emergency access and folks to get out from-
Right.
-whatever side some of you-
Exactly.
I'm curious now, in the back, you have that smaller parking lot. I would imagine that might be used by employees and folks that work at the arena?
I, I think that's going to remain as, as, um, parking for basketball court.
Oh, I thought that was being removed, it's not?
Um, only part of it, the gr- the-
The little, oh, it says remaining, okay.
Yeah, this little area right here will be removed, just because we need it for the grading. There's probably a six or eight-foot fill that has to happen to bring the grade up. If you go by here, it drops down pretty significantly.
Okay.
To make that basically level, to bring that up out of, out of the, the wetland. And if you look, the basketball court is filled up pretty significantly.
Yes.
So we'd be really right around that grade.
It says it here, I didn't read that carefully enough, sorry about that. Um, I, I per- I, I, I know that this will come out of the purview of, uh, the design standards, or at least the standards that, you know, you'll be paying attention to, but, um, I'm not necessarily convinced until I see some elevations, how, how much energy and effort and money you have to spend to shield it from Gorm Road. I would think that, being that it's gonna be a quasi-municipal building, if I can, if I can term it that way, if it matches the, the basic types of, uh, styles and architecture that, uh, the town has already established for its municipal buildings, then it could be something that you might wanna showcase, so.
Yeah, I, I was thinking more along, we've been talking about mechanical equipment, kinda behind the scenes, where we're gonna put it. It's probably not something we wanna put on the roof, it's probably something we'll be putting on the ground.
Right.
When I was thinking landscaping, it was more of to screen the mechanical equipment.
I see, okay. I thought you were talking about the building, so.
Yeah, and, and I think the building, we've, we've always been talking internally that we understand it needs to match what's on the municipal campus, so we're, we're thinking something that looks like brick, if it's not brick, to kinda match everything else that, and the efforts that have been put into the Wentworth School and, and the middle school.
So where's the back door where the zamboni comes out and drops the snow?
That's, that's old school.
That's old school.
What do you do with it?
They have, um, um, pits where they melt the snow, and they reuse it and recirculate that water now.
So it's all internal now?
It's all internal.
Okay. All right, so you'll have an access valve?
Yes, yeah, it's probably-
Okay, uh, great. I'm showing my age, I guess. Next thing you're gonna tell me is they have like, these aluminum sticks or stuff?
No, they're carbon fiber, and they're like, three hundred bucks.
Don't go there.
If there is a confliction, I mean, even, none of us here, or I imagine on the school, can foresee in the future a potential confliction with, uh, a nighttime event at Wentworth, and maybe a potentially major event at the ice arena. I mean, who wins that argument, if you will? Who gets that parking lot? I mean, has that been discussed?
It, it hasn't, but that's part of what's gonna come in that parking utilization study, and, and that Bill is gonna help us put together, we're gonna work with Bill. I think that's probably the key component to this whole project.
So I guess, and that leads me to, uh, just state that, uh, it, it would seem that scheduling would, you would have to have the school someone involved-
Absolutely, absolutely.
-to look over, to look over the scheduling.
Just please come and introduce yourself.
My name's Chuck Bradish, uh, president of Friends of Scarborough Hockey. Um, so to answer the question relative to, um, conflicts due to two sporting events, uh, like high school games going on, middle school game at the same time, one of the things that we talked about is the operational board, which is different from the finance, design, and construct board, what we have today, will be in place with people who will be responsible for scheduling. So one of the big things, obviously, is we'll come around, around September every year, we'll need to fill the ice, right, for that season. We'll need to work with not only the other high schools, um, but Scarborough High School, right, and look at what other events are happening on campus. So we'll do a collaborative scheduling event. There'll be representation on the board from the town, um, so to make sure that they have the proper visibility in it, and they can manage that. So we will look to manage that as best we can.
Okay, good. Um, and the, um, the mitigation for filling in the wetlands? Is, have you, have you started looking for a, a site, uh, to create wetlands or protect, and would that be in Scarborough?
That's something, informally, we've talked with, uh, town council, specifically Councilor Donovan. We've talked informally, we haven't talked specific, in specifics. Um, it's just been informal. That's something that we will be working through in, in the near future.
And I guess my, my last question this time, sorry for dominating here, but, uh, what about signage? Do you have any plans for signage?
We do.
I'm particularly sensitive to, uh, I'll just say that, uh, since this will be viewed as a municipal building.
Yes.
So I think the same standards that you would expect municipal buildings to apply to signage, which is low-key, monument-type signs, um, you know, attractively lit, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, nothing that would be high, pole-mounted-
Right.
Drink Pepsi, that kind of stuff.
That'll be for insight, but, no, we envision probably something along the lines of probably what the library does.
Yes, okay.
Something along those lines.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, Lee. And good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You, uh, rejoined the board just in time, I don't think I would've thought of the zamboni question. Thanks. Um, we'll jump back over here to you, John, so you don't feel left out down there.
I remember Mr. Wood answered all my, asked all the questions I had, frankly. And I wish you guys luck with the daunting task to raise that kind of money.
Nick?
Um, my, my question, I mean, um, Mr. Wood did an excellent job, um, but I have a couple of questions, and it has to do with the basketball court that's being removed.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is it just, I mean, in general, is it underutilized? Is it pretty much just vacant, or, I mean?
It is, and it's something we're gonna look at if the, if the need arises, if there is a need for that court, there's room next to the tennis courts to kinda reconstruct the basketball court. There's been talk of reconstruct a basketball court slash additional tennis court. That's one of the things where- one of the things we're, we're waiting for.
Just out of curiosity, I'm sure there's a council decision, but who would be responsible for that?
Constructing it?
Yeah, would, would that be the friends of?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And my, my other thought was, if you're losing that space back there and parking is a semi-concern, it looks to me like you might have the ability to wrap some parking spaces to the front side of that basketball court with your fire lane in the back, just a thought I had when I was, I was listening about the parking concerns.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, right, right in this area.
Yeah, and since you are losing a few spaces next to it. And then, I'm going to reiterate the point of this is an extremely prominent location within the community, so, you know, as far as the way that the, you know, I can't wait to see the elevations, because it's, you know, this is what people are going to think of when they think of Scarborough as they drive by. And I think, you know, as long as everyone's aware of that, and I think the board's going to hold you to that standard.
Absolutely, I can tell you that we've already been engaged with Goren Turgeon Architects there, we're working with them, Goren Turgeon? They've been heavily involved, they've done a ton of work with us already on this, so the elevations we've looked at for other potential sites have been pretty spectacular.
And you, you don't have the benefit of only three sides showing on this?
Right, every side, every side.
Four fronts, really, so, good luck. I think at this point, let me check my notes. I think I'm pretty much all set at this point, at this stage. Thank you, thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Jay, did you want to chime in on?
Yeah, if I could just chime in on the point you raised about losing a potential basketball court and the change of the municipal facilities. I did actually have a conversation with the community services director today, and he said, part of the ongoing discussions, I think it was even raised at the council level, is the expectation is that the town will be held harmless, so if there is a basketball court that is, needs to be modified, that's okay, but they need to, friends of Scarborough and Arsha, that will, friends of Scarborough Hockey, I'm sorry about that, will need to demonstrate where they'll be replacing that facility, so that, that will be an expectation as we move forward, so...
Thanks. Want to get that out. Susan?
I like the idea, I think it's wonderful, been too long in coming. Just to reiterate, because I'm so glad Michael is here, elevations will be enormously important, signage will be enormously important, landscaping, I love the word hefty, will be very important. This is a low-value wetland. I love that word, low-value wetland, it's just such a thing. But anyway, so there's going to be some sort of mitigation, that'll be important. The mechanicals are fascinating to me, I don't know how you're going to do that, since you have no bad side to this building, so I'm looking forward to seeing how you're going to do that. Pedestrian issues are really important to me. What do my notes here say? Oh, runoff mitigation, oh, yeah, I said that, okay. I like the idea, I've always, I've, I've loved the idea of having an ice arena come here, and I think what's really important about having you here is that you're a hockey person, but you also know what the board wants. So, this should be easy, this should not be a problem. You know what, what are our hot points and what it is that we can talk to you about, and I expect that this is going to be without any real hassle. Basically, I trust the fact that you're going to do this the way it's supposed to be done. I will say that I come down from this Scarborough library out to Gorham Road and wonder about all that water, all that wetland, so how we're going to process, I mean, we're going to have mitigation, we know that, but how are you going to actually process what you're doing to all of that existing wetland? It's going to be very interesting for me, I'm looking forward to seeing that. And I guess that may be all I have to ask, thank you.
Thank you.
So, a lot of good points and, and questions and points of emphasis raised already, I'll generally echo those for the most part. One quick question, just, you know, it's not necessarily germane to the substance of our review, but just for purposes of kind of our expectations, what, what is the current timeline for fundraising and sort of your overall ideal timetable for moving forward?
Idea would be to, to have the money in hand ready to start construction in spring. That may not be fully realistic, but that's, you know, that's what's been driving us, forcing us to get, not forcing us, but having us get up at seven o'clock a couple days a week to meet on this before work. That's our goal, our goal is to have an open winter of next year. Maybe unrealistic, may not be, it all depends on how quickly we can get funds in the door.
Go ahead, I have another question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I did have another question. On your December seventeenth presentation, it says on page two, under ownership, none of the three towns or schools has a home ice rink, what does that mean?
Okay, so we've talked and reached out to South Portland, we've reached out to Cape Elizabeth. What that means is we are kind of the orphan hockey programs, Scarborough, Cape Elizabeth. We don't have any true home ice arena, like Falmouth has, the Falmouth Ice Arena, Greeley has Falmouth Ice Arena, we go wherever there's open ice. So, you know, a couple of years ago, we were state runners-up, we have no place to hang that banner.
Know that, but what does ownership mean? It says ownership.
Okay, so the other piece of this is, the ownership piece of this is that there's going to be locker rooms dedicated to each of these towns, so they will have a buy-in or a buy, or pay for a construction of that locker room, so Scarborough will have a...
I'm sorry, do that again? They're going to have a buy-in in terms of...
Buy-in, there'll, there'll be funds paid for a locker room dedicated for just the South Portland hockey program.
I got you, okay, thank you. Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, if I could just follow up?
Sure.
Would South Portland be hanging their banners?
Absolutely, just like Greeley and Falmouth do together in the Falmouth, the Family Ice Arena.
Inside.
Inside, yeah.
All right. Thanks.
So, just sort of reviewing, reviewing things here, in the spirit of kind of summarizing the sketch plan review, obviously stormwater, wetland mitigation are, are big issues and big X-factors, I think, for all of us. As Susan was alluding to, when you drive around that area, particularly since Public Works opened that up along the side, sides of the roads, sides of the roads there, you can see just how high that water table is. My understanding is that it's just the water table, that's not even storm runoff or anything like that.
It's just the water.
So, it's just the water table, so that's a very stark reminder of, of the challenge that you're facing there, and, you know, we grapple with this on, on a smaller scale with residential applications that come forth, as you well know, on some of the conservation subdivision plans that we've seen, and we've had some recently that just on that scale have been, have been challenging. So, confident that you will come up with a way to address it, but we'll all be looking forward to seeing the details on that, as we will on the traffic and parking study. I'm glad to hear that there is already kind of a framework, at least a concept in place at this point, around having a, a management and operation plan, so that there's a protocol for, for hopefully planning ahead, and to the extent that there are potential conflicts that arise, that that can be resolved, and that there's a clear kind of pecking order, if you will, and a process for that. Obviously, the new Wentworth is just still in its first year of operation, and people are still getting used to the traffic circulation around there. I know, I've got two kids there, and I still get a little bit crossed up at times when I go through there, so I do think the good news is that, at least as I understood it at the time, and we did give an advisory opinion on the Wentworth School, that one of the reasons why there's so much parking in that lot is that there was, recognized that there was a need for parking for after-school events, and that there was a chronic issue with people coming to practices and events after school, and that that little Wentworth Drive was, was not cutting it. So, at least my sense of it is that that was always sort of thought of as, as being something that, that could be available for this type of thing. But that said, obviously, we'll look forward to seeing the details on the, on the anticipated demand and the management around that, as well as pedestrian circulation and safety, that will be critical. Lighting is always something that we look at, as you well know. Fire department requirements, that was already mentioned. Landscaping and screening was mentioned, obviously, and again, this is all, Susan alluded to, these are things that you're well versed in. I'll just, I will reiterate that architecture will be important, and I would say that even to the extent that there may be the potential for another building to go in between this building and Gorham Road, that I would strongly recommend that you assume for now that this, this facade, this elevation is going to be highly visible for the foreseeable future, and as Nick mentioned, it's going to really, and others alluded to, it's going to be a high-profile face for the town. So, I, I know you won't treat it as sort of the, the back of the house, and we'll look forward to seeing those elevations, similarly on signage, and I'll echo what, what Mike said about that, and glad to hear that you're thinking along those lines in terms of something comparable to what the library has done. So, beyond that, we'll look forward to seeing more details. Do you have any questions for us, or anything you, any other direction that you might be looking for from us?
I don't think so, I think you, some of the things you brought up was really good. I know we hadn't put a lot of thought into pedestrian point, thought, process of what happens when six hundred people leave at the same time. We've definitely got some homework to do there.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Mike?
Yes, Mike, and I, I'm not the engineer certainly, and this is, this is going to be your challenge, but my, my thinking is, is that to mitigate the impervious surface of the building itself, you're going to probably have to leave that wet area intact between Gorham Road and the back of your building. So, the thought of having another building in there, even in the distant future, is hard for me to imagine.
Well, the thing that we do have going for us is that it requires a fair amount of fill, six to eight feet, and that fill is all above that water level, so there's, there's an opportunity to do storage in that fill area with, you know, subgrade detention, stormwater facility, something along that lines. That's what's always been kind of in the back of my mind, thinking about that. So, I think there's a way to address those concerns, and, and anything we put a subgrade is just less fill we'd have to bring into the site.
But, I mean, are you looking at, are you challenging yourself to imagine that that, that opportunity to have stormwater runoff go into the area between Gorham Road and the back of your building to not exist? Is that how you...
That has been brought up by the council, it's something that we should consider, that that wetland area would be filled in its entirety at some point down the road.
I don't understand how that answer answers your question.
Well, well, what Lee is saying is, if I may through the chair, what Lee is saying is that they're approaching this as if that opportunity to use the wetland between Gorham Road and the back of their new building is not existing. So, they're, they're reaching for a higher standard.
Okay.
And I hope you get there, but if you don't, I hope the town council sees itself to maybe be flexible on that, that's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So, with that, thanks, and we'll look forward to seeing more.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks. Is there a town planner support?
Yes, Mr. Chair, a few items to bring the board up to speed on. One, let the board know that the Historic Preservation Committee is having a workshop with the town council this coming Wednesday at 6:00 P.M. They're going to start to review recommendations of the Preservation Committee for lists of local historic buildings for consideration, as well as begin discussion around various incentives that might add in the preservation of the, of the structures. Another item I want to make the board aware of is staff has been working for the last, I'll say six months, but it's probably been longer than that, on a technical manual, which would outline a lot of the infrastructure specifications that the town requires. You know, we often get detailed sheets that have ADA ramps, for one example, or best management practices for stormwater, and just to have a technical manual that applicants could go to, to have the town's expectations for crosswalk design, for example. Just a lot of the basic items that are on a number of sheets. So, it's a, again, it's a technical manual, we are hopeful to have our first draft out within the next month or two for folks to review, and certainly we'll be bringing that to this board's attention. So, we're hopeful that that'll make the review process for applicants even more efficient, as well as for staff review, to be sure that things are cohesive. And then the final item that we want to bring to the board's attention is let you know that the Long Range Planning Committee has begun work in the Higgins Beach area, had some beginning discussions with the Higgins Beach Association to consider zoning updates to that neighborhood, and so that work will be going on through the winter and spring, likely culminating in ordinance modifications for the board to consider come springtime. It's a rough, rough timeline right now, but just to sort of give you a heads up that that, those discussions are current. Those are the items that I, we want to bring to the board's attention.
Thanks, Jay. Is there any planning board correspondence beyond the, we did, we did receive, I'll note, received a couple of letters or emails regarding, well, one regarding the previously proposed expansion of Piper Shores, and another regarding the proposal that we've discussed a couple of times called Burnham Heights, and everyone should have copies of that. Is there any other correspondence? All right, thanks. Planning board comments? I've got a couple, or a few quick ones. Picking up on, when, Jay, when you mentioned Long Range Planning Committee, it reminded me that it's another thing that that committee is now working on, which relates to this last agenda item that we just discussed, at least indirectly, is sort of, I guess, maybe inspired by it, I guess you would say, is an effort to develop sort of a more comprehensive framework for looking at municipal property and both around this, the school and municipal campus and, and beyond. And I, it's the way, at least that I see it, is that this Scarborough hockey proposal has sort of spurred that, or helped to spur that thinking, not that it didn't exist before, but that, that the way it's evolved has been sort of organic and ad hoc, and it seems to be heading in a good direction, but that maybe it's an indication that this would be a good time to look at the Long Range Planning Committee to incorporate that into its thinking and kind of think long-term about how different town assets are being utilized, and, and what the needs may be going forward. Another thing I wanted to mention is that periodically, particularly when we have one or two new board members, and I guess, Mike, you would, you're technically a new board member, but you're not exactly, not exactly a newbie, we'll, we'll talk about setting up a, a couple of workshops to look at particular, specific issues or, or areas of interest, and so I guess I'd just suggest to the, to the board and to staff that we give some thought to that as we head into this new year, and, you know, we've got another board position that should be filled relatively soon, and we, maybe we can think about setting something up beyond that, possibly in connection with the, you know, one thought that comes to mind is the technical manual that you mentioned, but there are other things. In the past, we've had town, the town's legal counsel come in and talk to us about certain things, and we've had other technical conversations. Beyond that, I thank you for supporting me as chair, I look forward to this year, and again, welcome Mike back, glad to be back.
Yes, make a motion.
And with that, thank you, and with that, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thanks.